Everyone, I called the meeting of September eighth, twenty twenty one to order. Item one point O two, the roll call, Ms. Widener, please.
Mr. Door.
Here.
Mrs. Evans-Brockett.
Here.
Dr. Hollis.
Here.
Dr. Kohler.
Here.
Mrs. Lofton.
Here.
Mrs. Mayers.
Here.
Mrs. Roberts.
Here.
Dr. Weston.
Here.
Ms. White.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Widener. One point O three, the approval of the agenda, I need a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second, are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. One point O four will be presented next week, which takes us to one point O five and comments on any topic. Uh, we're going to accept public comment, just a reminder, um, that before presenting any comment, you must state your name and municipality within the district or the district building where you are employed. You're limited to three minutes, uh, do you have a timer?
Yep.
So we'll have a timer on the screen. We have opportunity for public comment now and at the ending, uh, but no speaker will be permitted to comment more than once during each of those sections. Um, an individual who is causing a disruption or directing personally abusive or obscene comments, uh, may be required to leave the mute meeting. And finally, the purpose of public participation is to allow the board the opportunity to hear feedback from community members, it is not designated for debate or discussion with the board. And just a reminder that we are under state mandate for masks, so if you come forward, please have a mask on.
My name is Jared Gale, Lower Frederick Township. Hi Gene, you missed me? It's been a while, I was pleased, uh, to see that you started to do the right thing by simply opening up the schools, but in your ever prevalent quest for mediocrity, you've simply stopped. Let, oh, sure, absolutely. Thank you. Let's play a game, one of these things is not true, Trump said to drink bleach or disinfectant, Trump referred to neo Nazis and white supremacists as very fine people. It's a trick question, all three are accurate, all three are absolutely true. Now I can see you smirking, haha, finally got him, I saw Trump say those things with my own eyes, I heard him with his own ears, I, I know that Trump said this thing, go back and watch the tape, you're incorrect. Now, the reason I bring those up is because we have to, we have to stick to known facts here, something that's been severely lacking in the past year and a half around here. Everything's been done based on fear a- a- and, and, uh, conjecture, speculation, not actual science and facts. Reality is that needs to be brought back into the, into the ballgame here. You have zero credibility when you keep talking about keeping kids safe, you can't even get, answer those three basic questions very simply. Now, Mr. Subers, I see you looking at me, now I'm glad you are, because I'm curious, did you use taxpayer money to investigate Beth Roberts' personal interests? Because if you did, that's a violation of job and I'm calling for your resignation immediately. That's a complete violation of taxpayers' money. Totally, totally uncalled for. Now, I am curious, does anybody know when Dr. Russell's contract is up? Because I've heard a little birdie telling me that certain board members here are trying to extend her for five years with a golden parachute, so if the new board that's coming in, because you all know you're gonna lose your seats here, tries to vote her out and get rid of her, she's got a guaranteed payout for the next five years. Yes, these things do spread, and that is just as bad, for all you hate Mitch McConnell and what he did, you're doing the exact same thing to us as taxpayers. That's exactly what you're doing, so think about that for a little bit, let the new board that comes in, because you're all gonna lose your seats, have a say in the direction of this going forward. Now, speaking of things going forward, let's talk about masks, everybody's favorite topic. For the third straight week, the case rates are down, the Delta bubble is not hitting the Northeast the same way it hits the South because there are many kids that are already immune to this either from vaccine or natural immunity. As we know from the CDC, this, this, yeah, natural immunity provides better protection than the vaccines in and of themselves. So the fact of the matter is countless case studies have shown that masks do not help in real world use when you're talking about cloth masks, surgical masks, and these garbage face diapers here. If you're talking about an N ninety-five, that's different, but I guarantee you not one of you has ever actually fitted one properly. Prove me wrong, I guarantee you haven't. So the fact of the matter is, it's just theater, it's nonsense. You're hurting our kids, something you're all very good and, and very well adept at. When you bring up suicide rates in this, in this, uh, community here to this board, y'all running high. You don't want to talk about the fact of the matter is, your decisions have directly impacted our children and that has led to multiple suicides in this very township, in this very district in and of itself. And I hold this school accountable for it. You all should be ashamed of yourself, I ask you, what is the end game when it comes to this nonsense? When are you gonna be done and call it epidemic as opposed to a pandemic? Because fact of the matter is, COVID's not going anywhere, it's literally in sixty percent of the deer in the wild population, humans go nowhere near deer, it's spreading amongst everything. You're gonna need to set a goalpost, put it in concrete, write it down, and let's move forward. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Roman, I live in, uh, Perkerman Township. So, I sent multiple emails to all of you before the school started. The reason I did that is I wanted to completely change your position on the masks. Then I had conversation with Dr. Russell. Then I sent multiple, uh, articles to Dr. Russell, all of them proves the masks are bad for kids. There's multiple videos just came out where people are actually measuring, um, the gases inside the mask, and they're going through the roof. You're abusing our kids, you're killing our kids, and just like, um, I forgot the name, uh, just like cigarettes, where everybody believed that cigarettes are great for you, and then not so great, and then maybe causing cancer, and now they're prohibited even to have commercials. This is gonna be the same thing, in about twenty years or so, mark my word, there will be a study come out, and the kids will be, uh, the ones that ke- uh, having masks right now, they will have issues either with the brain, with the heart, or with the lungs. That's the minimum that can happen. Majority of them most likely will have cancer, because, uh, when the, when they developing their lungs, when they developing their heart, those cells don't get a lot of air, when they don't get a lot of air, they die. What happens to, when you, when the cells die? They become cancer. So you're basically killing my kids, uh, with masks. That's one. Number two, we had, uh, an agreement that, uh, we're gonna try one week with masks. We're gonna have every thirty minutes breaks. Well, that was a lie, that was a huge lie, my kids came in, they were crying, they did not have breaks, they did, they could not breathe, my oldest one had headaches, same thing I was telling you people during, uh, my emails. Okay? We found two different, um, exemption forms, we send it out to you, those two different exemption forms. One by the doctor, and one, just a generic one that Bucks County uses. Okay? Your exemption form is garbage. The reason it's garbage is, A, nobody's seen it, B, you're changing it all the time, and C, nobody voted in it. Okay? Maybe Dr. Russell, uh, she has to tell you how everything is going good or bad, but you guys have to tell us, we elect you. So don't forget that magical number, November second. Don't forget that.
Hi, Tammy Campley, um, Perkerman Township. I just wanted to step forward, my children were virtual for a year and a half, I kept them out because I didn't want to have new teachers, I wanted consistency, so they remained virtual even when all of the schools went back. And I just want to come up here and say thank you to all the teachers, administrators-
Everyone, I called the meeting of September 8th, 2021 to order. Item 1.02, the roll call, Ms. Widener, please.
Mr. Dorr. Mrs. Evans-Brockett.
Here.
Dr. Hollis. Dr. Kohler.
Here.
Mrs. Lofton.
Here.
Mrs. Mayers. Mrs. Roberts.
Here.
Dr. Weston.
Here.
Ms. White.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Widener. 1.03, the approval of the agenda, I need a motion to approve the agenda as presented. We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. 1.04 will be presented next week, which takes us to 1.05 and comments on any topic. We're going to accept public comment, just a reminder that before presenting any comment, you must state your name and municipality within the district or the district building where you are employed. You're limited to three minutes. Do you have a timer? So we'll have a timer on the screen. We have opportunity for public comment now and at the ending, but no speaker will be permitted to comment more than once during each of those sections. An individual who is causing a disruption or directing personally abusive or obscene comments may be required to leave the mute meeting. And finally, the purpose of public participation is to allow the board the opportunity to hear feedback from community members. It is not designated for debate or discussion with the board. And just a reminder that we are under state mandate for masks, so if you come forward, please have a mask on.
My name is Jared Gale, Lower Frederick Township. Hi, Jean, you missed me? It's been a while. I was pleased to see that you started to do the right thing by simply opening up the schools, but in your ever prevalent quest for mediocrity, you've simply stopped. Let, oh, sure, absolutely. Let's play a game. One of these things is not true. Trump said to drink bleach or disinfectant. Trump referred to neo-Nazis and white supremacists very fine people. It's a trick question. All three are accurate. All three are absolutely true. Now, I can see you smirking. Ha ha, finally got him. I saw Trump say those things with my own eyes. I heard him with his own ears. I know that Trump said this thing. Go back and watch the tape. You're incorrect. Now, the reason I bring those up is because we have to stick to known facts here, something that's been severely lacking in the past year and a half around here. Everything's been done based on fear and conjecture, speculation, not actual science and facts. Reality is that needs to be brought back into the ballgame here. You have zero credibility when you keep talking about keeping kids safe. You can't even answer those three basic questions very simply. Now, Mr. Subers, I see you looking at me. Now, I'm glad you are, because I'm curious, did you use taxpayer money to investigate Beth Roberts' personal interests? Because if you did, that's a violation job, and I'm calling for your resignation immediately. That's a complete violation of taxpayers' money. Totally, totally uncalled for. Now, I am curious, does anybody know when Dr. Russell's contract is up? Because I've heard a little birdie telling me that certain board members here are trying to extend her for five years with a golden parachute, so if the new board that's coming in, because you all know you're going to lose your seats here, tries to vote her out and get rid of her, she's got a guaranteed payout for the next five years. Yes, these things do spread, and that is just as bad. For all you who hate Mitch McConnell and what he did, you're doing the exact same thing to us as taxpayers. That's exactly what you're doing. So think about that for a little bit. Let the new board that comes in, because you're all going to lose your seats, have a say in the direction of this going forward. Now, speaking of things going forward, let's talk about masks, everybody's favorite topic. For the third straight week, the case rates are down. The Delta bubble is not hitting the Northeast the same way it hits the South, because there are many kids that are already immune to this, either from vaccine or natural immunity. As we know from the CDC, natural immunity provides better protection than the vaccines in and of themselves. So the fact of the matter is countless case studies have shown that masks do not help in real-world use when you're talking about cloth masks, surgical masks, and these garbage face diapers here. If you're talking about an N95, that's different, but I guarantee you, not one of you has ever actually fitted one properly. Prove me wrong. I guarantee you haven't. So the fact of the matter is, it's just theater. It's nonsense. You're hurting our kids, something you're all very good and very well adept at. When you bring up suicide rates in this community here to this board, you all run and hide. You don't want to talk about the fact of the matter is, your decisions have directly impacted our children, and that has led to multiple suicides in this very township, in this very district in and of itself. And I hold this school accountable for it. You all should be ashamed of yourself. I ask you, what is the end game when it comes to this nonsense? When are you going to be done and call it epidemic as opposed to a pandemic? Because fact of the matter is, COVID is not going anywhere. It's literally in 60% of the deer in the wild population. Humans go nowhere near deer. It's spreading amongst everything. You need to set a goalpost, put it in concrete, write it down, and let's move forward. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Roman. I live in Perkerman Township. So I sent multiple emails to all of you before the school started. The reason I did that is I wanted to completely change your position on the masks. Then I had conversation with Dr. Russell. Then I sent multiple articles to Dr. Russell. All of them proves the masks are bad for kids. There's multiple videos just came out where people are actually measuring the gases inside the mask, and they're going through the roof. You're abusing our kids. You're killing our kids. And just like, I forgot the name, just like cigarettes, where everybody believed that cigarettes are great for you, and then not so great, and then maybe causing cancer, and now they're prohibited even to have commercials. This is going to be the same thing. In about 20 years or so, mark my word, there will be a study come out, and the kids will be, the ones that are having masks right now, they will have issues either with the brain, with the heart, or with the lungs. That's the minimum that can happen. Majority of them most likely will have cancer, because when they're developing their lungs, when they're developing their heart, those cells don't get a lot of air. When they don't get a lot of air, they die. What happens to them when the cells die? They become cancer. So you're basically killing my kids with masks. That's one. Number two, we had an agreement that we're going to try one week with masks. We're going to have every 30 minutes breaks. Well, that was a lie. That was a huge lie. My kids came in, they were crying. They did not have breaks. They could not breathe. My oldest one had headaches. Same thing I was telling you people during my emails, okay? We found two different exemption forms. We send it out to you, those two different exemption forms. One by the doctor and one, just a generic one that Bucks County uses, okay? Your exemption form is garbage. The reason it's garbage is A, nobody's seen it, B, you're changing it all the time, and C, nobody voted on it, okay? Maybe Dr. Russell, she has to tell you how everything is going good or bad, but you guys have to tell us. We elect you. So don't forget that magical number, November 2nd. Don't forget that.
Hi, Tammy Campley, Perkerman Township. I just wanted to step forward. My children were virtual for a year and a half. I kept them out because I didn't want to have new teachers. I wanted consistency, so they remained virtual even when all of the schools went back. And I just want to come up here and say thank you to all the teachers, administrators, and staff, because their return has been seamless. They're coming home. They're excited. They are really very happy to be back in school, and I feel safe with them being there. So I just want to say thank you. I also want to come up here tonight to say thank you as a response to Hurricane Ida. This district really stepped up to beyond students. It went to the community. Between PV Power Packs and Dr. Russell opening the building for showering for the community who needed to have, you know, hygiene, that's just amazing. And it's just one more affirmation as to why I've chosen to remain in Perkerman Valley through my career and through my children's career. So I know you guys could hear a lot of negative things on occasion, but I wanted to come up and just make a personal heartfelt thank you for everything you've done and the way that you're supporting the community, not just the students. So thank you.
Hello, hi, Edward McGuire, Perkerman Township. Just wanted to get up and say thank you to the teachers. You had a hell of a year, a hell of a year and a half, actually. Started off with a bang with a hurricane and, you know, no real change in kind of the conditions on the ground that we're dealing with as a society. So just thank you to all the teachers. You know, keep keeping on, fight the good fight. I can't believe you do what you do. I have a huge amount of respect for you, every one of you, whether you agree with everything everybody says or not. A lot of respect for the teachers. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Sorry. Good evening. My name is William Alexander from Perkerman Township. I just wanted to echo a couple of people's sentiments. First of all, in regards to Hurricane, well, it may as well have been Hurricane Ida, the way, and now granted, we did not compare to Louisiana and others get what they got, but we got walloped pretty well. When a creek that runs a few feet goes to 22 feet, knocks out an entire electrical substation that killed power for 15,000 of us, that's pretty bad. It's pretty bad. But thank you to Dr. Russell for the willingness to open the buildings for and to the district and the facilities and everybody else responsible for opening the buildings to allow people to get their basic needs, charge phones, showers, all the thing. I mean, that's, that's, that's a, that takes a real coordinated effort to do all that, and that's an amazing thing. I want to say thank you as well to the teachers, administrators at Evergreen Elementary in particular. I'm a new parent to the district. I have lived here now for a little over 10 years, but I'm a new parent to the district. And, you know, my, my child was, like, most kindergartners can be, many can be apprehensive about a new building, not even close. They made, they made my child feel like she'd been there all of her life. So I just want to say thank you to all the people and, and especially that shout out to the kindergarten department and my daughter's teacher, Mrs. Robinson. Thank you. I think that meant a lot to her. I would like to advise a word of caution to all of you. In a neighboring district today, a transformer behind a high school exploded today, very randomly, knocked out power to our high school and to our district office. And as a result, that district for the, for the high school is going virtual tomorrow because there was that much, that much damage, probably because of, because of what happened. It's not so much a warning, but just, just a favor to ask and say, please, if something like that were to happen, it's already happened, you know, with everything here, please make sure that whatever plans are in place, whatever contingency plans, and I'm not faulting that district in any way, nobody expected this to happen, but things do happen. If there is a plan in place, please, I caution you and ask you, please make sure that your teachers are well-informed of a plan prior to this. This was kind of thrown together last minute for, for the, for those, for those particular individuals. Has, it's not anybody's fault. It's just, you know, it's a scramble in a, in a time where, where scrambling seems to happen a lot. So I'm just letting you know that that did happen today. Everything will be fine, but if there is a plan where things have to shift suddenly, please make sure that we not only do we have the appropriate technology in place, but that, that everybody is informed of the plan that has gone, that has gone on. So, and I do wish all of you a very successful and as normal as possible school year. Thank you.
Seeing no other public comment at this time, we're going to move on to section two and reports and presentations. Item 2.01, the student liaisons report. Mr. Seibel and Mr. Schaefer, please.
Okay. Hi. As we all know, school started last week, and so far, it's been going phenomenally. Freshman orientation was a success, and our freshmen were very much so ready for their first day. Matt and I would like to thank Dr. Slavin, Mrs. Burdis, Mr. Burke, and all of Link Crew for helping run freshman orientation under Open House. They did an amazing job. Students so far have been following the mask mandate very well, and we're all receiving ample mask breaks throughout every class from our teachers. The robotics club is up and running, and I've been informed that they're currently looking for grant money, and Science Olympiad is prepping to get started this year. In addition to this, fall sports have begun with sports like soccer, tennis, and football playing, and there will be a home football game this Friday, so we hope to see a lot of people there cheering on our team.
This week, actually, tomorrow night, we're holding Open House, where our parents will get to meet some of our fabulous teachers. And today and tomorrow, our underclassmen, nine, 10, and 11, posed for some great photos. So I'm sure the yearbook is going to look great with all our bright shining faces. As school kicks into gear, like Christian said, we're super excited for all the sports and all the clubs. We have phenomenal sports and phenomenal clubs here at Perkerman Valley, so we're excited to just see how they roll and excited to see what they do. Despite the short week last week and relatively long weekend, unfortunately, we're happy to get back into the swing of things. Hope everybody stayed safe during, during Ida, the hurricane. And if anybody has any food, clothing, or toiletries to donate, some of our class officers are holding a donation drive until October 1st for our Hurricane Ida victims. Finally, we would just like to formally say goodbye and a big thank you to Mr. Stippa for his years of service at PV. All the students absolutely loved him, and we will miss him very much, but we wish him a very, very happy retirement. And in saying that, everybody have a great night.
Thank you very much for that report. Item 2.02 is the president's report, and I'd like to start off by expressing my care and concern for those who were affected by last week's storm. It was devastating to see the pictures on social media and then to drive around and see the damage firsthand. But as many have mentioned, the bright light that is shown through this is the strength of this community. I've had donations coming into Power Packs from the very beginning, people reaching out to see how they could help. I know some of our sports teams, including our boys lacrosse and football teams, went around and helped people move items out of their homes. We are truly PV strong. There are numerous resources that are out there available for our families, and Dr. Russell will be sharing some of those during her report, but if you were affected, please reach out to your principal or your counselor. There is help available. And I also want to recognize that Rosh Hashanah started on Monday evening. Rosh Hashanah is the beginning of the high holiday period for Jews, which culminates next week with Yom Kippur. So to everyone who celebrates, I want to wish you a sweet, happy, and healthy New Year. And that ends my report. Item 2.03, the superintendent's report, Dr. Russell.
Thank you, Mrs. Evans-Brockett. So I have three points I just want to, and I'll end up echoing some of the points that have already been made. We were very excited to start the school year. I want to talk to you a little bit about where we're focusing in this year currently, what are we looking towards, and then I will echo some of Mrs. Evans-Brockett's comments around Hurricane Ida and provide you with some additional information about resources. So we were really excited to start school, a little bit disappointed that we only had three days last week, but honestly, our students did a great job transitioning right back onsite to in-person school and falling right into the routine. You can see some of the photos here from early elementary grades to middle school on the left to high school on the right. So excited to have students back, and when we talk to them, that's what they express. They really want to be in school. So we're happy to have them back, and we've gotten right back into that routine. So what are we thinking about this year? I thought what I might do this year, as I begin to present some information, and really my goal in the superintendent's report is to showcase some really wonderful things that are happening in our schools. This year, I want to call out a goal or something we're focused on in the comprehensive plan. We will be reviewing our comprehensive plan in a short time under the leadership of Mrs. Smith. It's three years since we last developed a comprehensive plan, and these were our areas of focus. And we've been really focused on these three areas. I'm going to call out supportive schools, because there's been a lot of work done there, and we continue to have a lot of work to do there. So we're focused on providing safe and healthy environments, whether it's our facilities or it's the mitigation measures that we have in place as we combat this pandemic. That's a real focus, and it's ongoing. It doesn't stop. We're working hard to cultivate supportive and inclusive school communities. You hear the mission statement read every month during our board meetings, where we want all students to feel included, a part of the school community. We also want to offer all students rigorous academic opportunities to be included in those classes that they really seek out and will benefit from. And we're thinking too about nurturing our students, supporting their development to be respectful school citizens in a school community that's really changing as we observe the diversity increase over time. We're really working to understand one another in our school communities and develop a respect for one another. We have positive school-wide systems. You've heard the acronym most likely, PBIS, at the elementary level, and we are working to implement restorative practices at the high school level, really exploring that and beginning to develop some interest among our staff to participate on a core team. That seems like a more appropriate approach at the high school versus, say, PBIS. In both frameworks, the idea is to really focus on the positives and the things that our students do well and how we reinforce that, cultivate it. So this year, we're focused on, when we talk about teaching and learning and those supportive schools, some of those goals under there, culturally responsive teaching. What does that mean? That means really getting to know our students. It's been a long time since some of them have been in front of us on a consistent basis. We want to get to know our students again as learners in the ways that we know we can provide a high-quality service, a high-quality education. We want to understand what they need, and we want to employ the appropriate practices that are grounded in brain science, and we know research that pay off in learning. So that's a major goal for this year. If I transitioned to Hurricane Ida, I too want to express my sympathies and really a deep appreciation for what we have and what some people unfortunately have endured. I am really proud of how some of our community has stepped up in an effort to support, and the school district continues to offer itself for support in the areas of academic, social, and emotional, whether it's food, shelter, clothing, school supplies, or something else. We are inviting families, and we're trying to get that word out to let us know what they need. We do have social workers on staff. If individuals qualify under the McKinney-Vento Act for being homeless or being displaced temporarily, we can support navigating some of that if there are needs in that area, and transportation is something we will provide. Mrs. Evans-Brockett mentioned Power Packs. That went out in my weekly message today as well. So there are lots of people that want to contribute, which is great, because there are people with serious needs. So please, don't hesitate to reach out to the school district, and we will point you in the right direction, whether it's a school counselor, a principal, or a social worker. There's lots of willingness to support. This is one piece of information. Another resource, again, I published this this evening in the weekly message. This came out yesterday from the MCIU. They have a plethora of resources available. Now, I know there's not a lot of lead time for tonight. In fact, it ended now tonight. However, there is an opportunity tomorrow for some of our families that might benefit to access some resources or learn more about what's available. The individuals will be there tomorrow at the IU in Narrestown from 9:00 to 5:00, so all day. So again, we're appreciative of the stepping forward on the part of lots to support our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Russell. Moving on to item 2.04, the solicitor's report. Mr. Subers, do you have any report this evening?
I do not.
Thank you. 2.05, board and district committee reports. We haven't had any committee meetings yet, but check out the calendar, because they do all start up later this month. That takes us to section three and the consent agenda. Items that represent standard routine business of the board are included in the consent agenda. Board members may request to have any of the items removed for discussion. You can see the list below. Any questions on this? Moving on to section four, I'll turn it over to Dr. Kohler, please.
Thank you, Mrs. Evans-Brockett. Item 4.01 is our education update, so I will turn that over to Mrs. Smith.
Good evening, everyone. This evening's education updates, I'm going to tag team a little bit with some of my colleagues. Dr. Boyd will join me and Mr. Ganesh at one point as well. But we have a couple of topics for you this evening. Dr. Boyd and I will talk about the comprehensive plan and how that impacts the overall plan as well as special education, a little bit of an update on assessments as we have our preliminary PSAs scores, some technology information, and then we'll round it out with staffing in terms of Viking Academy. So starting with our comprehensive plan, Dr. Russell gave you a good into what is coming up with our comprehensive plan in terms of our midpoint review. The state has changed some of the language they are using and the platform that we use to enter this information in terms of our review. It's called the Future Ready Comprehensive Planning Portal, and they're using this terminology of ready, set, go. So in the ready phase, we look to review our mission vision and our values. In the set stage, we will be looking at a needs assessment from whether that is academic data to social, emotional learning, but really looking at our district and where our needs may be, our challenges as well as our successes. And then in the go is really identifying those strengths, challenges, and then what goals come out of that. And looking at what we currently have in our plan, what have we accomplished? Do we need to revise or change any of our goals as we're in the midst of that six-year plan? And there are also some mandated reports that are part of that, including the induction program and professional development. So we'll review those plans as well. The deadline for the district's full comprehensive plan is the end of March with a required 28-day public review. So we anticipate a school board presentation. Actually, we're targeting December to be bringing that to you to align with what you're going to hear from Dr. Boyd, so that we can be bringing everything to you at once. If we need to, we can certainly go a little bit later into the winter, but hoping to have our committee work done September through December. We have our first education committee meeting the end of this month on September 29th, and the focus of that meeting will be the comprehensive plan. We're going to encourage and invite some additional community members, staff members, students to join us so that we have stakeholders represented and really begin the discussion there to talk about what's the process, look at maybe our mission and our vision, and then from there, we will have breakout groups for future meetings throughout the next couple of months to get that work done and provide updates to the board. So I will turn it over to Dr. Boyd for the special education piece.
Hello, everyone. As Mrs. Smith shared, the comprehensive plan is due this year along with our special education plan. Our timeline is slightly different for the special education plan. Now, this is, it will be due March 30th. I'm sorry, I went backwards. My apologies. Okay, so with the special education plan, it is a triennial submission. So the special education plan has to be reviewed and submitted every three years. So we are upon that three-year term. It is an analysis of our data, the state versus the district. We take a look at our current programming. We identify the strengths, the needs, and suggest any areas for improvement, and then we develop action plans for any changes that we wish to suggest. And again, really, the purpose is, is to ensure quality programming for all of our students. Our timeline is slightly different. We're a month prior to the actual comprehensive plan. So our submission for the special education plan is due to PDE by March 1st. It also requires the 28-day of public review, and we're looking to present the plan to the board at the December 2021 meeting. the board at the December 2021 meeting. So our committee work will take place from September through November to get that work done in preparation to present it to the board for your preliminary approval so that it can go out for public review and then any revisions that would be required prior to submission to PDE. The other component this year for special education is cyclical compliance monitoring, and this is a process that occurs once every six years. So the last time this was done was 2015. This is conducted by the Bureau of Special Education in coordination with Pennsylvania Department of Education, and really, it's designed to ensure that we're complying with federal and state mandates for special education. And what you see here is a timeline. So we've already received information from the Bureau of Special Education with regards to the process of the onsite combined with virtual monitoring, which will take place in February. So leading up to that is a timeline of events that will occur. We did have mandatory training. It was via webinars that we were asked to review. So we have done that. That is actually due by Friday. Then we begin our facilitated self-assessment, which is consists of 23 sections, which need to be submitted electronically. There are surveys that will be issued to parents, to teachers, and to students. And then all of that information, as you can see, will be due in January in preparation for the onsite monitoring, which will occur in February. And then upon completion of the actual review, we will be issued a report of the findings. If there's any corrective action, there will be timelines associated with that, and we also have the support of the Bureau of Special Education through the entire process. But I did want to make the board aware of that and what's coming. And I'll turn it back over to Mrs. Smith.
So moving into our assessments, I'll go just briefly into a draft assessment schedule we've been working on and then get into those preliminary results for PSSA, as well as we have our AP exam results back, and then want to wrap this section up with our thoughts and moving forward with the assessment committee. So what you'll see on these slides is that every year, we create a district assessment calendar. When will we be giving certain benchmarks? When do those state assessments occur? What other data pieces do we want to have to help inform our instruction? So these are in a draft state right now. We are continuing to have conversations with our building administrators to ensure that we are striking that right balance between the number of assessments with our students, that we have sufficient data, as well as not having too many assessments, and also making sure that we are doing something with that data after those assessments and how is that driving instruction and really making a focus on that instructional leadership in those areas. So this slide just has the K to 5 information on it, you know, and you'll notice some different assessments maybe in K to 2 than what in third, fourth, and fifth, as we begin those state assessments. You'll see some additional benchmarks and items in there that really, we're trying again to find the right balance between a diagnostic assessment that adjusts itself to each individual student and changes the questions versus that benchmark on grade-level standards. And so again, still reviewing, I'm not sure that we've struck that right balance yet, but we continue to think about that. Same thing in 6th, 7th, and 8th grade. You'll see similar things in terms of the MAP and the Lincoln, as well as the PSSA tests. And then our high school really looks very different because we don't have those similar assessments there, but they do obviously have the Keystone Assessments, PSATs, AP exams, and those other pieces. So we'll bring it back once we've had some additional conversations, and we also would like to get some input from that assessment committee that we've had in the past. So preliminary PSSA scores are here. Some districts may have opted to still test into September. They had the month of September to do so. We did finish that up last year, and we recently got our results. So I just gave you a snapshot of some things here. We will give you much more detail in the annual presentation in January. But this slide is just giving you a picture of grade 3 through 8, the scores in mathematics for this past year of 2021, and then the table below just has the basically the same data in a different format. Anything in red or yellow would be that below basic and basic, and then anything in green and blue is our proficient and our advanced, and you can certainly see how that progresses across the grades as we move along. In English Language Arts, you'll notice that this screen looks slightly different. We don't nearly see as much red on here. Certainly, those math scores, we would like to have seen them to be, you know, much better than what they are coming in at. You can see the ELA scores as well, moving across grades 3 through 8. We're still at the point of really, you know, we're at the surface level of looking at this, and we're looking much more deeply into the actual kids. How do we use that to drive instruction? How do we use it to, you know, map out our curriculum changes? And really also conversations about how much weight do we really give and credence to the PSSA that was given in the midst of the pandemic and so forth last year. Also, thinking about the number of kids who exempted or opted not to participate last year was definitely increased from our previous years. So there's a lot more data analysis to complete. Here's science for you. Remember, that's only administered in grades 4 and 8. And then I thought I'd just pick two grades, one elementary and one middle school, just to show you the historical comparison. So I have 2017, 18, and 19. Remember, there was a break then. There was no PSSA in 2020, and then you'll see the 2021 results. And I have math at the top and ELA at the bottom. You'll notice the trends are not moving in the direction that we would like to see them move in, and so again, more investigation to do in terms of that and what that year where we didn't have a PSSA and then this past year, you know, during our, what our instruction looked like last year with the different models, a lot more investigation to do. And then here's 8th grade, you know, and obviously, you can see here a lot more red in the top in terms of math, and we'll be working, you know, with our middle school teachers as well as administrators to really investigate and look deeper at this as well. So just some preliminary information that we wanted to share. More to come. The 2021 AP results are here, you know, from our high school. We're proud to continue to see that we have so many of our students scoring that 3 or higher. So the chart on the left shows you the progression across the past several years and the number of students with a score of 3 or higher. And then on the right, you just see some numbers with how many exams were taken across those years, and again, the percentages of students. So as other data comes in throughout the year, we'll give you some preliminary information, and then we'll focus a lot of it in that January presentation on the data piece. We would like to, in the past, we've had an assessment committee. It's been a smaller committee. It's had some representatives from the board. It's had some administrators, and we really have sat down to talk about three major purposes, that assessment schedule and to get feedback. What do we want the annual report to look like, which is that flyer brochure that really portrays the district for the year that is developed annually, as well as that annual data presentation in January? So we would like to bring this committee back to fruition, you know, and if the board is willing and Mrs. Evans-Brockett, we would love to, you know, talk about having that added to the assessment list, getting some dates about three times a year, typically what we've met to really drive these things and having some board representation if you'd be willing to entertain that. So moving into technology, and Mr. Ganesh will help me to answer some questions here. For the past several months, we've been hearing this term about interactive panels, and we initially presented this in education committee and to the board when we were initially talking about the use of ESER III funds. And then we kind of went back to the drawing table, and we looked at different ways to use ESER III, but we did continue to allocate a smaller portion of ESER III towards interactive panels. So we're bringing forth to you our recommendation for that portion of the funds. We would like to start at our middle level. It would be about 105 panels to cover both of the buildings, and the reason we've selected the middle level is first and foremost, there's staff support and interest at that level. There's administrative support and interest and a commitment to providing ongoing professional development, and they have a structure just naturally built into the middle school schedule, which is team time that allows for that ongoing PD to happen, professional development, as well as the expectation for how to use this board truly in an interactive capacity in your classroom. So we're excited to start with that level and use that then as a model to make decisions about if we would want to roll out into our high school and into our elementary levels in future years. The resource is a 75-inch panel with its own built-in computer or computer that's kind of connected to it and a mount. Mr. Ganesh will point out and show you the one in the back that we have here as a demo. The funding pieces, I'll talk a little bit more deeply on the next slide, but we're looking to use ESER funds, and we also have the option of a lease. And then our timeline would be really dependent upon board approval. We are anxious, if this is something the board supports, to place orders so we aren't in a position of Chromebooks like we were in past years of not being available or on back order. At this point in time, we are anticipating really not an installation till about mid-year. Till the order would be placed, we would receive them and have them mounted, and then that professional development to occur. So as far as funding, it is approximately $380,000 for the panel, the device, and the mount. Option 1, which is the recommendation from Mr. Ganesh and I, is to purchase those devices outright with the funds we allocated in ESER III, and you've board-approved that, $176,000. You will hear Mr. Weaver present tonight on an update on our other ESER funds, and there's about $168,000 remaining there. And that is remaining there because the cost that we expected for our summer programming was that much less when you put together the transportation, the staffing, those pieces. There was a savings there, and you did allocate funds in ESER II towards technology. We paid for some of the Chromebooks and so forth, so that is part of our allocation, and we could adjust the funds to that. That leaves about $26,000 not covered that we would need to work with our business department to determine where in the budget, whether that may be from a curriculum budget, the technology budget, or somewhere else. We would work with the business office to determine where that funds could come from. The other option would be to do a lease, about $97,000 a year across four years, and you can see, we can fund three and a half years basically with those funds from ESER III and ESER II that are available. And then in that fourth year, the remaining balance, which is about close to $50,000 when we calculated it, would need to come from either the technology budget or by that point in time, the Ready to Learn grant could cover that as well. So the difference is really maybe, you know, about $25,000. We want to invest that in a lease and pay across four years, or would we want to, you know, be able to do that now? The other piece that goes with this is wireless projectors. We do have a need across the district for about 90 wireless projectors. We still have classrooms that are wired, which really keeps the teacher stuck to one area of their classroom because that's where their computer has to be to connect to the courts. So we've been moving forward with getting all of our classrooms into wireless projectors. So we need about 90 of them, but knowing that if we move forward with the panels, we will be able to reallocate still-functioning wireless projectors out of our middle schools into classrooms at the elementary and at the high school. We feel that we really only would need to order 45 of them now, and we would have 45 really good functioning ones out of that middle school when we put the panels in. So you'll see for action tonight is actually the purchase of that, and Mr. Ganesh has put together that quote for you. If we should not move forward with the panels, we would then be bringing back to you an additional purchase of another 45 projectors to make sure that all of our classrooms could be outfitted. But I will turn it over to Mr. Ganesh if he would like to add anything or show you.
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. So just want to highlight a few things about the panel itself. Replacing the projectors with these panels would not only provide interactive capabilities, but also these panels last longer. These panels, the lifespan of these panels are about 12 to 15 years, whereas a projector, the projector bulb burns out in two to three years. So you're going to get more bang for your buck with these panels. As far as installation goes, we, it's just like mounting a TV on a wall, so we decided to install these panels by ourselves. Even if we had to purchase installation services from the vendor, we would still need to send somebody from our team to follow them, to mark up locations, run wires, et cetera, and we thought this would be much more effective to install ourselves and fiscally responsible to the district as well. So it was the same as about $50,000 in installing it ourselves. And as Mrs. Smith mentioned, there's about 90 classrooms that are using old projectors, not only wired, but they are really old and dying, and there's about 45 of them. There's immediate need that we need replays. So if this, for some reason, if this interactive panel project does not go through, we'll have to buy another 45 to 50 projectors to replace those old projectors. And projector, overall, the projector technology with all the displays coming up and with all LEDs and everything coming up, the projector technology itself is kind of a slow-dying technology, which might go away in the next several years. So we're looking forward to kind of replacing, starting as a pilot, replacing these older model projectors with these panels. There's a panel back there for the display, if you guys want to take a look. It's touchscreen, and it can take multiple inputs. There's a, it can run a PC or it has an operating system by itself if needed. Be happy to answer any questions that the case has. Yes.
Supply chain issues getting to program?
So when we initially started working on these things, a few months back, the backlog was up to eight weeks. So I'm not, I'm not sure what the status is right now, but yes, there is about six to eight weeks backlog for these items.
Ms. White, please.
I just was curious. I know that we had talked about putting maybe one or two of these units at the elementary level as well and maybe one of the special area teachers, either explorations or a library, just so that children in the elementary schools would have, I mean, you'd get a lot of bang for, the whole building could have access to a technology and exposure to it for when they get to the middle level. And I just was wondering if there was still a potential, if there was conversation associated with that, or if we still have the opportunity to maybe revise the middle school number to include our elementary schools.
Certainly, I would say if that is something that the board is interested in, I would love to go back to our special areas and our elementary principals and say, is this something you might be interested in? We haven't had as much conversation with the elementary administration or those special area teachers, but I would agree with you that I think an area that all students have a connection to might be a good place to, you know, insert one.
I guess my point is, is that with the ESER funds, four more units are really not that big of a impact overall. That's all.
So we do have a few demo units in the elementary buildings already, so we have about five or six of them in the elementary buildings.
Mrs. Lofton.
So, excuse me, I have a question related to the bulb replacement cycle. From what I recall, we were phasing out of doing the bulb replacement because the goal was that we would start to implement the interactive panels. Is that correct? I'm thinking back about two years, like to a pre-COVID conversation that we had about this.
You're right, Mrs. Lofton. We initially had this conversation about replacing the projectors with interactive panels. That's the reason why we brought in the demo units and installed them, and I think at this point, every building has a demo unit, but it's still in the demo phase, it's still in the piloting phase, and we never moved forward. We are still, we're still buying projectors because, because prior to ESER, we didn't have the, we didn't have the financial resources to buy all those projectors at once, all those interactive panels at once. So with the availability of those sort of funds, this would be a great opportunity to dive in that direction.
So I guess I'm just wondering if our goal is that we are ultimately moving to the interactive panels. If we've looked at what the break-even point is for the need to be buying new bulbs and how that compares over a 10-year cycle to the interactive panel and whether we actually are getting the right number? How did the actual number of interactive panels that we're purchasing get selected? Was it based on our replacement needs or was it just based on what the middle school was looking at? Because if it is more cost-effective over a 10-year period, perhaps we should reconsider that number.
Right. So as far as, as far as the cost effectiveness, yes, that would be the goal for us to move away from the projectors and go towards the interactive panels, and hopefully, the middle level will give us enough data to move in that direction.
So I guess just my question is, why are we buying 45 new? I understand that they're not working, but why are we buying 45 new projectors when that's not the direction we want to be going in?
Because there's, there's an immediate need in these classrooms, and the projectors that we need to supply these classrooms with, with some projection capabilities, and we don't have the monies to buy 45 more interactive panels.
So would it make more sense instead of putting an interactive panel in every classroom in the middle school to be putting them, getting the number that we need for replacement projectors for interactive panels and then allocating those based on our replacement cycle needs?
I understand what you're asking. Might it be a better use of our, our resources to take, purchase the panels for the 90 classrooms that need the, the devices, right? And that way, it's a kind of a refresh, if you want to say, and then we continue in that vein. We certainly could investigate doing that. It would spread some of our human resources to support that implementation pretty thin. So being able to focus at the middle school really allows us to have a focus area. Our instructional coaches would help to support, our technology department, Dr. Parr, you know, we pull together and really support, as well as that built-in PD time with the team time is really crucial. You know, the elementaries are doing an implementation of into reading this year, and a lot of their 8 to 8:30 times, and PD time is dedicated to that new resource. So fitting in yet something else new might, might be a bit much for them right now. I mean, and high school has some focus areas, so we could look at that, and I think we could put together for you, you know, what that 10-year cost difference would be, you know, or do we want to spend some more on interactive panels right now so that we're not purchasing, you know, as you heard him say, that what may become an outdated technology? So we can analyze that a little bit more and get more information to you, but that's why we chose to focus on, on the middle school, just with our human resources, being able to have a really good implementation there.
Are there any other questions from board members?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So one last piece from me is just an update on Viking Academy because you will see some items for action this month. If you recall our conversation last month when we were in the auditorium, we talked about, and the board gave us direction to move forward with the creation of synchronous classes in our elementary level K to 5, which then required staffing in order to support those classrooms that are fully virtually and with our own
support those classrooms that are fully virtually and with our own teachers. And so you'll see action items for this month for the approval to create the positions and then the approval of the staff that we have gone through interviewing and that are the successful candidates. So our staffing needs broke down to a total of six teachers or one per grade level and one teacher in special education who is supporting students from K to eight who are virtual but identified special education students. And the funding for those is, we still had one contract remaining out of the elementary program that had not, there was not a need to fill at the time. So we used that since it was included in the twenty one, twenty-two budget, leaving the six positions to be utilized through COVID reserves, which was the direction from the board last month. Remember, we had presented the possibility of using K plus teachers and your will or your desire was really to maintain that program and move forward with these additional positions. So you'll see that this, um, this evening, um, as an item for you to approve for, for next week, but wanted to help make sure that you understood what those are there for. And then when we get to the enrollment report, I'll talk a little bit about how we've represented the Viking Academy enrollment for you. Any questions on any of the other topics presented this evening?
Um, can you just explain very quickly what is Linkit?
Yes, I can. So, uh, many years ago, the district used what was called a foresight test. And foresight was really a precursor to the P S S A. Students took a test that was very similar paper pencil to the P S S A, questions aligned to state standards. And you could do an item analysis on that to see how many kids got question two right, which might have been aligned to math standard two point five. Um, that has become kind of a test that's kind of gone by the wayside, but still had really good information for us. Linkit is the data warehouse and analytics system that we have purchased for the last several years where we house all of our data and we can pull our reports. They mirrored the foresight assessment within their own assessment. So a Linkit benchmark is really a benchmark of state standards in that grade level, in that particular area that we can drill down for each individual student, you know, gives a score in terms of how we think that they're going to do on their P S S A, how they did on the benchmark, and you can drill down to the individual question asked. So it is very much a benchmark where the map is a diagnostic and the questions are different for each student based upon how you answer and it scales up or, or, um, you know, down to that frustration level for a student to really get kind of a grade level. You could be above grade level, below, or on grade level. Good question.
Anything else? Any other questions from board members? I think you're staying right there though.
Okay, yep, I'll stay here for the enrollment report.
Yeah, so I was going to say, item four point oh two is the enrollment report, if you just want to continue on.
So we've tried to, um, take this back to what you were used to pre-pandemic. So the top portion of this looks like what you've seen pre-pandemic with the classes and how many students are in each class in the elementary. The middle schools represent their homerooms and then you can see the high schools just by grade level. The bottom chart is new. So if you recall last year's enrollment reports, they became two pages because we had virtual, we had onsite, we had lots of things going on. So this year, we've tried to return it to pre-pandemic, but give you a picture of what Viking Academy looks like at the bottom. But there is a slight difference and I'm sure some of you were astute enough to catch this and I just want to point it out. The chart on the left for Viking Academy totals by grade level shows you the number of kids that have opted for virtual instruction regardless of if they are receiving their instruction through Montgomery Virtual Program, our partnership with Warren County, or our own teachers in that elementary program. On the right shows you the Viking Academy enrollment by building, in case you were wondering, well, how many of those kindergartners were from Evergreen in each grade level? But it shows you for the elementary, notice that I wrote synchronous there above the schools. Those are the kids participating in with our teachers. So when you look at the totals, you see one twenty-nine on the left and one twenty-six on the right. That's because there are three elementary families that chose to want to participate in an asynchronous format, either through Warren County or Montgomery Virtual. So I just wanted you to know that was not a mistake. It is purposeful so you can see the total number versus how many have chosen to be with our teachers in that elementary program. And if you would like to see this represented in a different way, we're certainly open to feedback if, if you'd like to see it represented differently.
Thank you.
Thank you all who presented. Uh, moving on to item four point oh three. The recommended action will be a motion to approve the following revised international trip as reviewed and forwarded by building principals and district administration. Are there any questions, comments?
I just, we had asked when this was presented if this is still open and you were going to look into that, so I was curious if we had an answer on that.
Yes, um, Mr. Peterson did, um, get back to me. Students can still sign up. I believe they have a deadline of October fifteenth, though. They wanted to ensure that our students still had a sufficient time to attain their passport if they needed to. So yes, they are still accepting through, I believe, middle of October.
So should we leave this off of consent in case the number of students changes from sixty-two or is it okay to keep it on consent? Okay, so we'll move it to consent. Item four point oh four, the recommended action will be a motion to approve a contract with the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit to provide Title One services to non-public students. Any comments or questions? So we'll move that one to consent. Four point oh five, the recommended action will be a motion to approve Dr. Ronald Whitaker as a consultant for professional learning and curriculum development. Comments, questions? Ms. Mears?
Thank you. Um, I was just wondering if we could hear a little bit more of what the district sees Dr. Whitaker, um, doing, like what his topic of, um, education or professional development might be. I just wanted to hear a little bit more information. I did go on his website and looked at, um, everything that was presented to us, but I'm just interested in hearing more.
I can elaborate on that, Mrs. Mears. Um, we really are looking to have a consultant to really work with us to guide some curriculum work. We are hoping to present to you in December with program planning, some new, more diverse courses in our high school, so helping us to flush out some of that curriculum, as well as helping us with planning of some of the professional development that'll support our mission and our vision, those inclusive practices that you heard, um, Dr. Russell speak about. You know, specifically, we're looking for more, um, support in really helping, how do you get to know ourselves and our students more deeply instead of having deficit thinking, thinking about our strengths and what is termed as the funds of knowledge? What are our kids bringing to the classrooms and really helping our teachers to delve into that and understand that to drive their instruction? Um, as well as thinking about how the brain reacts and how we learn and kind of tying that all together for our teachers. You know, how do the things you bring into the classroom that are innately from you and your family, a part of you, react to how you information and that processing comes in? So those are really the areas that we're looking for his guidance in, you know, helping us to frame out what the professional development will look like and the content to help us move forward.
Any other comments or questions? We okay moving this to consent? Item four point oh six, the recommended action is a motion to approve Dr. Jenna Rufo as a consultant for professional development of the administrative team. Comments or questions? Mrs. Mears?
Thank you. Am I asking you the question? I don't know. Who was asking?
I'm thinking Dr. Boyd may want to answer.
Doctor Boyd, okay, thank you. Um, so I know that the district has really had a focus on, um, looking at inclusive work and making the schools more inclusive. I, looking at Dr. Rufo's, um, just the schedule of what we were looking at, it was a little unclear to me, are we going to contract with her for everything that was presented to us? I mean, it's, it's not a, um, inexpensive service, although I think it's valuable. And so I guess that's my first question. Um, and I guess the second would be, I wondered if that was the goal, do we really need the phase one? Because, I mean, we've, we've, we've done a lot and there's always more to do and everything, but just, I was just wondering what your thoughts were.
Sure. So for your first question, okay, for your first question, it is in phases and we can certainly have that conversation. We can approve one phase, two phase, all three phases, um, as we see, you know, as the board would like, you know, to see us do that. The first phase is really, again, with the administrative team so that we can further the work with regards to our mission. Um, in addition, we have, I believe it's eight new administrators to our leadership team since the last time that we did any work. We, we started the work really in the eighteen, nineteen school year and since that time, we've had a significant change in our leadership team. So the purpose is really to get everybody on the same page, to provide them with the information with inclusive practices. And again, when I do make further presentations through the school year, we've continued to increase the amount of, uh, students that are included physically into the general education classroom. This work really is about extending and expanding the knowledge base and focusing on those instructional practices so that we can get better at our work in the building, at the building level. And really, when we go in and we go into classrooms, we can be doing look fours for certain, certain strategies and looking to, how well are we including our students to support academic achievement and growth? So that is the purpose for starting with the administrative team.
So when will it be brought to the board as to what the hopes are? So I, it wasn't clear from what, um, I read. Is that what you're asking for, all phases or I don't?
I believe if, if I'm correct, Dr. Boyd, the agreement that is proposed there, the costs that are associated are for all three phases. So it is inclusive of all three. And the first phase is really designed to support our principals in being instructional leaders within their building and leading inclusive practices. So while we've done work with Julie Costin in the past and we learned about inclusion, this is really to focus on how do you lead these efforts in your building? And we're trying to keep our team a year ahead of what that professional development plan is. So we did work with them last year on the, the professional development plan you heard Dr. Russell talk about for this year. And now next year is inclusive practices with our teachers. So we're trying again to keep the team a year ahead and really get them ready to lead that. So it's more about that leadership. How do you lead that in your building and get that culture within your building? But it is inclusive of all three phases, correct?
Yes.
Is everybody comfortable moving that one to consent?
I just have a question because the, the way the contracts written is a little bit confusing. Um, so is there a not to exceed amount? Because she just gives what it is per three-hour session and then what it is per hour. Um, and it doesn't say how many, it, so it sounds like you're having three, three-hour sessions with the three phases, but then is the per hour for administrative coaching on top of that?
Mrs. Evans-Brocket, I think it would be prudent for us to go back. So if I could ask the board to keep this off consent, we, administration will evaluate that and be clearer with what it is we're exactly looking for and hoping for from Dr. Rufo. So if that would be okay, we'll share that in the memo tomorrow and then revisit it Monday night.
Okay, so item four point oh six will remain off of consent. Moving on to item four point oh seven, the recommended action will be a motion to approve a memorandum of understanding with the Montgomery County Office of Public Health for staff to participate in the project ACIT COVID nineteen assurance testing to reduce the risk of in-school transmission. Any comments or questions? Dr. Russell?
I, I do have a question for Mr. Subers or Mr. Moran. I believe we were considering a shift in language to resolution here.
That's correct. I did submit, I submitted it in a form of resolution that would be reviewed with the, uh, appropriate, uh, bargaining units and then certified. Uh, their, their approval of the board's proposed process pursuant to the resolution would be certified by their signatures to a certification of the resolution. So yes, the, the wording should be changed to resolution and, and it would be contingent upon the approval of the P V E A and P V E S P A.
Thank you.
So should we leave this off consent or can we put on consent with the understanding that the wording needs to change? I'm on four point oh seven right now, correct? So four point oh seven is correct.
Yeah, I'm sorry. That is my mistake. I was looking at four oh nine. I apologize. Four oh seven is correct. That's with the Montgomery County Office of Public Health. I apologize for that. It's four oh nine. Thank you.
Okay. So can we move four point oh seven to consent? Okay. Item four point oh eight, the recommended action is a motion to approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two athletic health and safety plan, version five, as presented. Any comments or questions? Mrs. Mears?
Um, I'm wondering, sorry, that's really loud. Um, can athletes also have, do they have the ability to have a mask exemption? Like are typical, are students in the schools or is that not? I'm wondering if you're an athlete on a team, just like if you're in school and you are able, for whatever reasons, you get a doctor's signature to, to exempt you from wearing a mask, do our athletes have that same ability to have access to that or is that a?
Uh, when they're not participating.
It wasn't clear to me and I just wanted to know what, what our policy is.
I think the athletes are only required to wear it when indoors, not participating, and when they're not actually participating, they're excluded from the mask requirement when they're participating in the athletic activities.
We have had, volleyball is the only indoor sport this fall and those athletes have been wearing masks when competing indoors. Right now, I don't know that we have an example of an exemption, but I believe we would honor it. If a student qualifies and meets the criteria, we would honor that exemption across the board as our student. Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
So I had a comment question. Um, do we need to call out specifically, because we actually do have indoor sports in the pool area? So do we need to call out that masks do not need to be worn while participating in the pool or is that given? I mean, it's kind of obvious, but does it need to be spelled out? It was last year, I believe.
Okay. We, we can certainly do that. I think it was presumed, but we'll, we'll take a look at that. We can make that revision, if you're comfortable with that, and call that out. So it would be spectators and coaches and when students are on the bench, they would be expected to wear masks because they're indoors while in the pool, not. So yeah, we can do that.
Mr. Dorr?
Does P I double A have their own exemption process?
They do not. They do not.
There is a note on page three, under consideration for athletes about P I double A physical forms being submitted and reviewed by coaches. I, I think that addresses the, if the athletes are required to mask while playing, piece of things. That's my interpretation of that.
I think the physical form, if I'm, without having it in front of me, that you're referencing is the obligatory physical they must get before participating as a P I double A athlete. That doesn't speak specifically to masking. That's a local requirement on the part of the district.
Any other questions on item four point oh eight? Should we, we'll leave this one off consent. And then item four point oh nine is a placeholder, so that concludes my section.
Thank you, Dr. Colar. Move on to section five on business and turn it over to Mr. Dorr.
Thank you, Mrs. Evans-Brocket. Five point zero one is a finance update. Mr. Weaver? Thank you and good evening. Thank you and good evening, everybody. Uh, we'll have a quick finance update. Uh, we'll hit the act, the estimated act one index, which is overdue from the state already. Uh, it was due by September first. Last year, it did not come until the end of September. So, uh, we have some estimates that have been done by our fine professional organizations, PASBO and PSBA, that we can, uh, throw out there for consideration in the hopes, uh, that those estimates are, are projections are pretty much on. We'll have an ESCO update. We have Mr. Maury here, um, live and in person to provide, uh, any kind of answers to your questions that you might have and provide that an update. We have arbiter payroll, uh, process, which is a third-party processing, uh, for athletic officials, uh, which is, uh, sweeping the state and is, is a, is a service that we will recommend. We have a quick S R update, as Mrs. Smith, uh, mentioned. We do have preliminary twenty twenty-one audit resorts, uh, audit results. Um, those are unaudited, uh, so we'll go through those. And this is the beginning of that process as we un, un, unveil how we've done in our process and our revenues versus expenditures. Quick, uh, update on contract. Quick update on contracted services where that stands for operations specific to two companies that we'd like to contract with. And a quick update on freezer installation. So remember, this is an estimate. 3.4% is our Act One index for this current year as we built this year's 2122 budget. It was a 3.0%. So it's slightly higher and you would expect that from all the data and all of the information that we've received from our various organizations. So 3.4% index, Act One index will drive, based upon Act One calculations, about $2,553,000. That is a key number that we continue to monitor moving forward as we develop our 2223 general fund budget. And it is also a key factor as this board decides whether or not we want to follow through with the signing of the Act One resolution, which locks us into that rate, or if we want to consider the process, budgetary process for exceptions moving forward. So that process is beginning and again, the state is late on that. As soon as that is published, we will of course, share that with the school board. Mr. Maury, we have an update from PHM Associates, our ESCO consultant on ESCO 4.0. Mr. Maury updates us in the business office with Mr. Clemmer and the operations, Mr., retired Mr. Clemmer, almost. Every two weeks we do get a report. So you haven't seen one in a month, so we'll bring Mr. Maury up here for a quick update.
Thank you. Well, it's, it's nice to be here in person. It's been a while since I've been at one of your meetings in, in flesh and blood, so to speak. I'll be brief and then answer a question if you can, because I sent, I sent a report home. I'm sure you've gone through it. Suffice it to say that this year, construction in general has been interesting. The supply line issues have created problems on every project I have going. It's created problems here. But you know, that coupled with the particular sensitivities of the COVID situations and the access requirements, et cetera, it makes, it makes for keeping construction schedules interesting. So if you will, we're, we're currently about 55% of the way through the project in terms of what CM3 has issued in terms of invoicing and we're still holding 10% retainage. Their next invoice, which will be coming in about another week or so, will, will get us well over 50% when they'd be eligible for 5% retainage. But in the past, we've kind of held on to it even longer and we'll probably do the same here, just to let you know that. The, again, we're, we're at about 55% in terms of invoicing now and, and you're actually paid less than that because we're still holding about $325,000, 328 in, in retainage. The, the subcontractors have been working well. I've been in and out of the district. I've been playing tag with Jeff Angstad, who's the superintendent for CM3. He's been managing this project and another one in Norristown, and so he's able to go back and forth as needed between the two projects. And so far, so good. If you looked at the schedule in the back, you'd see I, I've, I've kind of indicated arbitrary percentages that are, that are in the ballpark for where we are completed on the various items that are listed in the Phase Four project. Obviously by this time, they're, they're further along than when I wrote this, which was last week. I took a, I took a long weekend dodging rain and went to New England. But the progress is, is, is substantial in, in a, in a couple of cases. For example, the, the South emergency generator is probably well over 50% at this stage of the game. We still don't have the generator, but the, the site is ready for it. Another area that we've had issues with, and you may have heard about some of those, are with the DDC control installations, particularly at Evergreen and Skipac, because we're replacing the entire system from the older pneumatic controls that have been in existence since the building was built to a new DDC system, direct digital control, consistent with all of the other work that we've done in the district over the past several years. And there have been some access issues for that because of particularly at Evergreen with the summer school. We have to get into each one of the, each one of the spaces in the building and convert the equipment and then program it. And so, you know, we've, we've worked, I think we've worked very well with the staff trying to stay out of their areas when, when, you know, when they need them. But if they're going to be out for an extended period of time, we try to get in, replace the controls in the rooms and then deal with the programming, which can be done from a computer remotely at another stage of the game. That's still going on. We still have some spaces that have not been accessed and there have been some issues with, you know, with the controls not exactly working initially. And to be honest with you, I expect to have more of those when we finally fire up the boilers and go to the first heating season. It's inevitable when you have buildings with controls of this level of sophistication that there will be some glitches in the programming. There should be nothing major. There should be minimal disruption, but we'll, we'll be on top of it, you know, if and when that occurs. I mentioned the South generator. That, that's really the only work we're doing at South. As you know, the bulk of the work in prior projects concentrated on, on South. We essentially have an entirely new HVAC system and a substantially renovated school. The chillers at Evergreen and middle, predominantly Middle School East, that's the big installation, are here. They're at the Crane Yard in Reading and we'll bring them onsite to install as, as, as we get ready to do that, once, once your existing season is completed. All of the boilers are here. They've been set in place. There's two of them at Schwenksville, Skipac and Evergreen, one each, because we're converting your old boilers, bringing in newer high efficiency boilers, very, very similar same manufacturer as we've done in all, in the other buildings earlier. And the only issues associated with that, and again, I'll, I'll echo the supply chain problems, we don't expect the heating pumps until October 6th was the date we got today. And that's four weeks away. There won't be an issue at Evergreen and Skipac because we have one functional boiler that's remaining in place. At Skipac, we're going to have to make some sort of interim arrangement in order to fire the boilers ahead of time. We may get the, the, the heating pumps earlier than that, but we've also asked the supplier whether they can provide a loner for us to use in the interim. And we also have identified a 10 horsepower pump that we can relocate to Schwenksville to run temporarily if needed. So we've made provisions for that, but again, it's part of the supply chain problems we have that, that go across everybody's business. If you've been involved in any kind of construction, you have to be aware of that. The Schwenksville roof was completed very rapidly in the beginning of the summer. There were some leak issues as we tore off the old roof because there were some, you know, some pretty bad areas on some of the seams, but we, you know, we caught the leaks very quickly and they finished that. And kudos to the roofer there because in order for that roof to have gone on as quickly as it did, he pre-ordered shingles and other materials before he had the contract. In fact, he ordered them from several different suppliers and built a backlog for our project and for other projects. And that happens to be a contractor I've worked with many, many times over the past 10, 20 years with great experience, but it really worked out well here. So Schwenksville has a new roof. The oil tanks are done. The exterior work at the high school and, and Middle School East is done. The glycol system installations will be putting glycol, antifreeze for lack of a better term, into the heating system so that you won't have freeze-ups. We'll worry about that once we get everything up and running. That takes a little period of time to inject the glycol into the system, but that's all, that wasn't planned until after everything started up in the fall anyway. The last item I want to mention is the Middle School West, which is not on the agenda for this summer. It's on the agenda for next year and that's the conversion of that building, changing the boilers, changing the hot water heater, changing the kitchen equipment over to natural gas. And that means that we have to get a natural gas line from Pico, which is, if you recall our earlier meetings, is a, a long run, run down Big Road and then an equally long run into the, into the school. And Pico's cost for that is fairly, fairly expensive. It's, it's about, I, I forget what the, the number is, but I know Jim was carrying $600,000 in his budget projections. I think the number is, is somewhat less than that. But we're only carrying 50% of that in, in the budget for this project because we expect the housing development that's proposed essentially across the road from there will also want to install gas for all of the units and that Pico will obviously dictate sharing costs. And we've, we've explained that we're going to need some direction on that. We don't need it now. We won't need it this month. We'll go, we'll wrap up what we're doing now and then we'll talk about it. But I talked to Mr. Weaver last week and said that we need to schedule something with the township, the school district and us to see where they are. I had a meeting with newly, newly nearly retired Scott today and he said that he was by there earlier and saw that there was some surveying work going on on the property across the street, which is a good sign because something may be moving there. So we'll, 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 we'll try to get a hold of the township, see what's going on and see if there is a, a substantial possibility that we can get sharing on that price. Because obviously the payback for burning gas in the building is directly dependent upon the, the energy savings, which I've calculated and I know exactly what that'll be, but it's also on the purchase price. So the number that we had in the presentation you, you ran, Mr. Weaver, was about eight years, 7.9 years, something like that, based on the current numbers. So we'll, we'll follow up on that and report back as needed. That pretty much concludes where we are. I'm, I'm comfortable with where we are, but I, I would much rather have it completely done now that the kids are back in session because now I, now we need to be a lot more careful as to what we do so that we do not do any disruptions. I've got other projects there worse. I have a, I have a roofing project that was awarded in June and still hasn't started because I can't get the materials in, in another district, not, not neighboring, but nearby. So, so we're doing pretty well, all considered. Do you have any questions?
Couple of question for you. I'm just trying to remember, how many feet of pipe are we talking about here?
How many feet of pipe?
Yeah.
For the gas line? I think the gas line's in the traffic circle out in front of the Wawa, so we have to run all the way down the road, across the ravine and then into the school.
So we're doing more than our property?
No, we'd be doing, well, Pico does.
Yeah, what I asked is all the permitting and all that sort of stuff.
Yeah, we're going to be paying for the cost of it for Pico. Now, I, I have mixed emotions as to how Pico prices things, okay? Because you know they're going to charge us to put the pipe in, but you know they're going to make money back on future developments and that's why we're trying to force the issue with this current plan.
Yep, absolutely. And then one other question in relation to it that just went on my head. Have we seen the geology in the area yet? Do we know where we're going to be paying for rock?
Well, we suspect that there's some in the area.
Montgomery County, that's why I ask.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's a, there's a lot of unknowns yet that we have to, we have to nail down. Very good questions.
Another question for you, the eight to nine year ROI that you cited, was that based on us paying the entire cost of running the gas line or is that, so that does not work in the assumption?
That was based on a $600,000 cost.
Okay, so that's assuming that the development will be taking a portion of it that will cut that down. Okay.
That's our goal. Thanks again.
Just more curiosity. What is, I see you took a tank out and we filled some in. What dictated not taking them all out?
All out.
It's filled and closed in place.
Which one?
Middle School East.
I have some pictures of someone's Schwenksville we did in place because of the utilities.
Yeah, we changed. Yeah, yeah, we changed that one. Okay, and that one, in fact, we had, we had the dumpster on top of it for a period of time that, that the roof was in progress and so we kind of had to push it back until we let the roofers finish. And then we had to address that. There were, there were a couple, a couple of them that were very, very sensitive. It was a question of what's, what's in the neighborhood and how, how much risk do we want to take to, to get rid of it? Either way, you know, that you're, you're safe, you know?
Okay, and as a reminder, Phil's report is attached in the board docs. So if you'd like to get into the nitty gritty.
And as always, my number's on the, on the letterhead, so you know how to get me.
Thanks, Phil. Okay, I have some pictures here. So on the left is the new KN boilers at Evergreen that Phil had mentioned and in previous months we've reviewed the amount of space that these newer KN boilers actually utilize and provide for us for storage purposes. Out goes the old big old furnace, in comes the new, much smaller, much more efficient KN boiler. And then on the right-hand side is taking out the old oil tank at Evergreen. So that was one where, when we, when we called PA1 call, the utilities were not near there. So we had a little bit, a lot more flexibility to take that out. Here is Middle School East oil tank. It was closed in place. You can see that on the left slide, next to the truck is the pad where the oil, underneath that is where the oil tank was. And you can tell there's a lot of stuff going on back in there with electrical lines and sewer lines. So the decision was made to close it in place right there. And again, they double check it, make sure it's okay. They pressure test it, make sure there's no leaks, and then they put that concrete mix in there that is supposed to fill that all up. And tests were taken. I believe Mr. Bittler at one point in time discussed the fact that we have to do three borings and three different tests or six, depending upon where it is and the size, just to make sure that there's no leaking in there before we do close it up. Passes DEP, so we're all in good shape with those. Here is the Schwenksville oil tank. Again, there's the pad and there it is actually closed up. And so again, similar situation when PA1 call came in there, there were lines all over and right near that concrete pad, we made the decision, Mr. Clemmer actually made the decision, that we would close it in place. Again, budgetarily neutral, whether we removed it and took it away and disposed of it or actually closed it in place, the dollars were similar. Okay. Moving forward, Arbiter Pay Services. This is a third-party payment service that is being recommended by Mr. Felty, Mrs. Hurd and myself. And these are, this is specifically set up for the payment of officials for our athletic contests. Typically, we had somewhere between 500 to 550 officials on any given year and the cost to do this is $2.15 per transaction. Arbiter summarizes and collects all of the payroll information for the officials. Remember, they're not PVSD employees, but yet we were running them through our accounts payable department. We had to track down the 1099s. We had to make sure all the clearances were in order. We had to make sure that they got paid. And if they didn't show up because it was rained out, where were they going to get, you know, sometimes they had to give us refunds. Sometimes we missed people because they had last minute check. Arbiter does all of this for $2.15 per transaction. So the total cost is not to exceed $1,700. It is a no-brainer. The PAC 10 is moving towards this. Many schools in, throughout the state is, they are utilizing this because it saves on reduction of efficient, of job duties within the business office. And it was, it comes highly recommended by us to the school board. Any questions on that? Thank you for that. COVID Grants Update. Again, Mrs. Smith recognized that, that I was going to have a, a part of this. Here's a summary. This is not unlike what you've seen in the past. You do know that our FEMA and our PCCD grants, they've all been fulfilled at this point in time. What we applied for, we received. Essers 1, Essers 2, Essers 3, all in various stages. Essers, Esser 1 is completely spent. That was the smallest one, the 227,000. Essers 2 is the one that we were talking about a little bit tonight. You can tell that there's about $168,000 remaining as we go through this process and Essers 3 has barely been touched. That is the largest one. That's almost $1.8 million. Again, we have until September 2024 to spend the biggest amount of dollars with Essers 3. And again, we'll continue to keep everybody abreast as we move forward with this because these are critical dollars for us moving forward as we come off of the pandemic at some point in time and still utilize to the best of our abilities, these monies that, that will help our kids and our students continue to, to excel. We do have some other gear grants, Governor's Emergency Education Relief. There are also ARP grants, which are part of our state allocation and our state budget, which is yet another portion of that, that we're working our way through. And yes, each one of these three has different criteria and different points of interest as we use these. So we've got to be careful in how we use them and how we set them up. Last but not least, the PVSD Foundation granted $50,000 for us to use and we utilized most, all of that money for our one-to-one Chromebooks as we quickly pivoted at the beginning of the pandemic. All told, $3.1 million in, in COVID monies and COVID grants afforded to the school district to do programs above and beyond to bring our kids back. Preliminary 2020, 2021 general fund results. Now remember, obviously these are unaudited figures. Essentially, what it, what it shows is that our revenues, 112,703, outpaced our expenditures, 111,129. Again, keep in mind, when we developed the 2020-2021 budget, we had the pandemic in mind. So we did some serious reduction of our alternative revenue sources that are driven by the economy as we thought that the economy would not react the way that it did. As a, as a matter of fact, the way that it did. As a, as a matter of fact, the, the economy stayed solid. The economy grew for our earned income taxes, which this board knows, we've been tracking, we were tracking that. We couldn't believe it. It was great. All the alternative revenue sources, earned income taxes, delinquent taxes, real estate transfer taxes, all of those taxes far exceeded the budgetary numbers that we had in there. The only alternative revenue source that really didn't rebound was interest earnings. And we do know our interest earnings is still about a .015% based upon what we could possibly invest in. So that's really the only one that didn't recover. But we cushioned ourselves and we made the appropriate adjustments, I feel, as a reaction to the pandemic. So positive influence on our general fund, fund balance, that's what we're, unassigned fund balance, that's what we're predicting. We do know that the board moved forward with a movement of $1 million back to a Peasars Reserve to refund that because we spent it all down this year to zero. So we refunded that back to a million dollars. And it looks like, again, these are unaudited figures. We'll be back with Carl and we'll, we'll continue to talk about them in the finance committee, about $232,000 after the 8% max cap on unassigned fund balance yet to be transferred to a COVID reserve. That would be the recommendation from Mrs. Hurd and I as we've gone through the process. We could move it to capital reserve. We could move it wherever we feel is necessary. And we'll develop that over the next couple of months. Any questions on that? That's really the, the big highlight for tonight, is that we stand in a positive surplus based upon our initial numbers review. Again, for fund balances, again, it's estimated. So take this all in. As we continue to make decisions and develop our budgetary process for 2223, you can see where it is that we're estimating our fund balances will be. And again, we're in good, solid financial shape. I would like to point out as a conversation piece, the COVID reserve, again, which was built based upon the savings for the 1920 school year, because we ended essentially transportation, school year and a lot of things in March of 2020. Those savings we took, we moved that into the COVID reserves for the purpose of helping to offset some additional costs. Remember, we developed that because we had the opportunity to, and we had no idea that these COVID grants would be afforded to us. So we did the proper thing. We put that money aside and we continue to dip into those monies as we continue to move forward for all of those COVID reserve expenses that won't be covered in a grant. Okay. Moving forward, contracted services. So we've been talking about working with two independent companies, SOS and Precision HR. Mr. Moran and I have had a number of conversations with them. And we were getting ready to move it forward. And we discussed with Mr. Subers. And Mr. Subers has recommended that we hold off until October because we have some due diligence things that we need to do on the backend, which is fine. Remember, there's no cost to the use of these firms until we hire somebody. And because we're not going to hire somebody until we have formal board approval, we can continue the conversations that we've been having with these two companies. For comparison purposes, the, the question was asked, well, what's the difference between a PVSD employee and one of these contracted services? Because the cost to contract out is higher than the hourly rate that we've been paying. So a quick comparison shows you how it is that we're, that these numbers prove out to show that if we can do this and have this MOU approved and move forward with this, we have a lot more flexibility and actually is cheaper to hire those, those services, the substitute services, the backup services in case of quarantine for custodial services. Those types of areas are which we're, we're focusing in it versus actually having a PVSD employee when you include the benefits associated with a, with a full-time PVSD employee. And that's been a guiding principle for Mr. Moran and I to help to make sure that we have the necessary substitutes in place to continue to clean and sanitize and maintain the social distancing that we need to do with our students in class, eating in the cafeteria. These cleaning and maintenance of sanitizing are key to the success of having our kids come back. And we understand that. Two significant pieces of these. I have copied and pasted the buyout clauses for both of these contracts. And the key component is we can have a, an employee from SOS for 520 hours on time. And then we have the opportunity to actually request that that, at the, at the end of that, join our staff and become an employee. There is a fee for that, which would add $2.88 per hour to that overall comparison cost. Precision HR, however, says if you hold the employee for 750 hours, which is roughly six months, after that, there is no fee. So that's one of the reasons why Mr. Moran and I have been utilizing both of these contractors, because they both give us a little bit different options and flexibility to meet our demands moving forward. Mr. Klemmer initially, as part of this conversation, he likes the fact that we get to see people work so that we can evaluate whether or not we'd like to offer them employment at, at the end of a given time. Again, keeping in mind, we have open positions and we have substitute positions that we're trying to fill so that we can maintain our operations in the, in the schools. Okay, one other piece. So tonight, there is a ratification for a freezer. This is a reaction and a proactive reaction to make sure that we have increased storage. We knew about the supply chain issues, which I think we talked about last month, and the ability for Mrs. Jaksic to maybe perhaps get a nice big load of frozen chicken or beef or something, and then to be able to store it. Because when we get those opportunities, we have to jump on it. And the supply chain issue, you have to make sure that we have the ability, the ability to do that. We did look at other options. We did look at purchasing and with a group of other food services. Unfortunately, every time we would purchase, there has to be bid prospect. And it, it was a six to eight week delivery time. With these rentals, because these companies now know with these leases, hey, within two weeks, you can have one here. So for $1,826 a month and a one-time fee of 1,250, it made sense for us to utilize this and rent this for this year and then to evaluate whether or not we actually want to use it in the future. Mrs. Jaksic is pretty sure that we have sufficient freezer in a normal time. So we probably won't need this next year when we come back to school. I'm being very positive here. But, so that's why we kind of went that way with the lease. Okay. Yes, Mrs. Lofton.
So just, what is the cost to purchase one of these outright?
So the actual.
Ballpark.
So the ballpark is somewhere in the neighborhood of $25,000. It's not that much more expensive than the lease.
So are we locked into having this for the six months? Or can we just have this as a stopgap while we're looking to purchase one? I guess.
It's, it's a good question. It's a one-year lease.
Okay, one year.
One-year lease. And that will take us through the end of the year. And then hopefully we'll never have to do that again.
We can hope. Okay.
So it was close. We thought about that. But the real kicker was they'd rather hold on to these and manufacture one. And that's what would take six to eight weeks. So we made the split decision to go ahead and sign the contract for the lease and move it forward because we knew we could get it here within two weeks.
Just want to confirm that's hooked up to a backup generator too, right? Or will be?
I will, I will confirm. We, we hooked it up.
But I'd collect that much meat, then.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I'm assuming that we're renting rather than purchasing because if we continue, if we continue to rent beyond this, this year coming forward, will they, does the rental agreement provide for upgrades as far as the age of the, the unit that we're renting? Or do we just get that unit and that's the unit we have forever and ever?
Well, that's a good question. We would have to ask. The, in the, the contract documentation doesn't really speak to that. It just has an end to the lease. I am sure if we are happy with it, they would be happy to extend the lease.
Yeah, because considering, considering the fact that we're not really sure when any of this is going to end, whether it be problems with the other hurricanes or pandemics or whatever. I mean, this might be, this might be something that we might want to lease beyond just one year. So, thank you.
Mrs. Mears.
I was just going to ask if there is a buyout option in the contract?
There, there is, there is not. Pure lease, pure lease with no, no buyout. Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Moving on to 5.02, there's no report for September. 5.03 is on consent. 5.04, it's a motion to approve a settlement agreement and release 405742 in lieu of FAP as recommended by the solicitor. Any questions? Okay, seeing none, if we can move to consent, please. 5.05, it's a motion to approve a settlement agreement and release 300901 in lieu of FAP as recommended by the solicitor. Any questions? Okay, if we can move that to consent, please. 5.06, it's a motion to approve a partnership agreement with Integrate for Good to work with select special education high school students on transition services at a cost not to exceed $8,100. Any questions? Ms. Mears.
Thank you. Dr. Boyd, I was wondering if there is a follow-up program? Because I think the program's fantastic. It's just, it doesn't serve that many students. And so I was wondering if we're beginning to track, are we getting, you know, bang for our buck?
Again, I think they're very good questions. I did reach out to Dr. Weinberg. She did share that she had issued a survey linked to the families that were involved, but had, has had limited feedback. So she's going to resend that. She also shared that they did an evaluation, you know, a follow-up to the project, and actually found that they felt that they needed to improve the parent involvement piece and, and to work with, with families to know how this service. So again, this is a service that is working with some of our most intensive students. And it's a focus on transition services as we prepare them for post-secondary living. So with that being said, it's really important to engage with the families because this is, this really is, I'll say, a service that, you know, that, that is going to be taken out then into the community with hopes of employment. So they are adding in two parent sessions for the next time they do it. So they, they have done a review of that work as well, as well as it was also virtual, not onsite because of the situation last year. So we've, we've taken some things away from that. And then as well, it's also strength-based. So we're, it's helping us to develop transition activities and services for our students, really within the school setting as well. But we would like to continue partnering with them for at least another year to see if we can extend this to more of our students, even though it's a small number of students that are impacted with this.
Are we okay with moving this to consent? Okay, thank you. 5.07, it's a motion to ratify a lease agreement with Montgomery County Intermediate Unit for Pre-K Counts Program at Middle School West, beginning September 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022, at no cost to the district. Any questions? Okay, if we can move to consent, please. 5.08, it's a motion to approve a payer agreement with Arbiter Pay Services to provide third-party payment services for all PVSD athletic officials at a processing fee of $2.15 per transaction with a total estimated cost of $1,700 for the 2021-2022 fiscal year. Any questions? Okay, if we can move that to consent, please. 5.09, it's a motion to ratify a lease rental agreement with Polar Leasing Company for refrigerator-freezer unit at a total cost not to exceed $20,010, base monthly rate of $1,856 per month for 10 months, plus a one-time freight charge of $1,250 for the purposes of providing the ability to inventory higher food quantities during the 2021-2022 school year. Questions? Okay, if we can move that to consent, please. 5.10, it's a motion to approve the purchase of 45 Epson wireless projectors for classroom district-wide at an approximate cost of $27,495 through CoStars. Any questions? Okay, if we can move that to consent, please. 5.11 is a placeholder. And that ends my section.
Thank you, Mr. Dorr. That moves us on to Section 6 and Payment of Bills. And Dr. Weston, please.
Thank you, Mrs. Evans-Brockett. Item 6.01, the ratification of bills and payroll and the authorization of payments. And item 6.02, the approval of the Treasury Report and Financial Statements. Both of these items will be presented for action at our meeting on September 13th. And that concludes Section 6.
Thank you, Dr. Weston. That brings us on to Section 7, Professional Personnel. And Ms. White, please.
Thank you, Mrs. Evans-Brockett. 7.01 is on consent. 7.02 is the approval to create virtual teaching positions. The recommended action is to ratify the creation of seven professional teaching positions for Viking Academy to offer synchronous virtual instruction to students grades K through five, six positions, and special education services for grades K through eight, one position. Are there any questions? Seeing none, we'll move that to consent. 7.03, four, five, six, and seven are all on consent. 7.08 is approval of memorandum of understanding, co-curricular salary schedule. Recommended action is a motion to approve a memo of understanding with the Perkiuman Valley Education Association, PVEA, to adjust the co-curricular salary schedule as presented. Are there any questions? Seeing none, we'll move that to consent. 7.09, motion to approve, I'm sorry, approval of memorandum of understanding, FMLA. Recommended action is a motion to approve memo of understanding with the Perkiuman Valley Education Association, PVEA, regarding a family medical leave as presented. Are there any questions? Seeing none, we'll move that to consent. 7.010 is the approval of the election of District Superintendent. Recommended action is a motion to approve the election of District Superintendent in accordance with 24 PS Section 10-1071, 10-1073, and 10-1075, and motion to enter into a contract to establish salary and fringe benefit for the position of District Superintendent. Are there any questions? Seeing none, we'll move that to consent. 7.11 is approval of election of Assistant Superintendent. Recommended action is a motion to approve election of Assistant District Superintendent in accordance with 24 PS Section 10-1071, 10-1073, and 10-1075, and a motion to enter into a contract to establish salary and fringe benefit for the position of Assistant District Superintendent. Are there any questions? Seeing none, we'll move that to consent as well. And that ends my section.
Ms. White, if I could, I apologize. I wasn't fast enough on my mic, my phone on 7.08. I know you'd asked to move that to consent. I'd ask if we can leave that off of consent. We are meeting on, this Friday, to review that information again, to ensure that everything is accurate, so that we present that on Monday. Let's present.
Thank you, Mr. Moran. Then the record will reflect that, correct? Okay, that ends my section.
Thank you, Ms. White. Moving on to Section 8 on Support Personnel. Mrs. Roberts, please.
Thank you, Mrs. Evans-Brockett. 8.01, two, three, four are all on consent. And 8.05 is a placeholder for next week. And that concludes my section.
Thank you very much. Section 9, Governance. Mrs. Mears, please.
Thank you. Section 9.01, approval to hold a second reading and adopt policies. The request is the approval to hold a second reading and adopt the following policies. 006 meetings, 006.2 meeting agendas, recommend retire, 905 citizen advisory committee. Are there any questions or comments? I have a question. So I still, I'm referencing policy 006. Still would like to see us consider either one, moving it back to policy committee, or just having a discussion currently that I, I don't think that. I, I don't think that, as it's been, I stated previously, that putting, making the comments in the beginning of the meeting linked to the agenda, I think, is very, I just think it, it gives a barrier to community members who want to come and speak and express their, express their concerns, or express their thankfulness, or whatever. If they want to communicate with the board, I, I don't want to see us move forward with that. Also, I think that keeping the discussion from the community for an hour of Section 1 and Section 10 from our community members is also prohibitive, possibly. I mean, tonight, it's just, I think when there are concerning issues in our community, and community feels strong, they need to have the ability to come and express their opinions. And yes, there is email, but when you're standing here and we're sitting here, you know that your, your message has been communicated and it's been received. So, I don't know where that leaves us.
That leaves us at a discussion with board members, if anyone else would like it to return to Policy Committee to have a second look at it.
I think that's fair, what she's asking.
Okay, so we'll return 006 to Policy Committee to have further discussions.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Evans-
Hoffman.
Mrs. Evans-Brockett, if we are returning that to Committee, then do we need to hold on retire in 006.2, since that was being wrapped into 006, and then take that one off as well?
Well, 006.2 was, was really, I think, a redundant policy. It stated the agenda, which had already been stated in 006. I think that's why we retired.
No, it wasn't in 006 before.
I would suggest we review that and leave it off the consent agenda, review it, and report back to the board next week on that matter.
Okay. So, we'll return 006 and 006.2 to Policy Committee. So, that just leaves us with 905, Citizen Advisory Committee, and if we want to move that to consent.
Okay, thank you. So, we'll move that to consent. 9.02 is request to choose and, sorry, it's a recommended action is the motion to choose and endorse candidates for PSBA officers for 2022. Are there any questions or comments?
Can we leave this off consent? I mean, I, I didn't have a chance to do my due diligence on it.
Well, it has to stay off consent, yeah, because we, we need to pick one person for president, and then in the forum steering committee, only three candidates. So, those are the two positions that would have any contest to them. So, we, we do need to-
Then we'll just do that next week. Okay, thank you. That ends my section.
Thank you, Mrs. Mears. Moving on to Section 10, Closing Item. At this time, we'll accept comments from the audience with the same procedures as earlier, please.
Chair Kerr, Lower Frederick. I'd like to thank Ms. Mears for the, bringing up that agenda item as far as public comment is concerned. That is very important for the public, to be able to be able to give accurate consent to each agenda item as we go along in the, throughout the evening. I really appreciate that. One thing I really have to, to question here, are we really debating policy about masks in pools? Is that seriously what this board is doing? I mean, honestly, is that what we've come to? Do you guys call yourselves proud to be able to do that? I, I don't even understand what that is, to be, to be serious. To, to expect children playing basketball to wear masks running back and forth, are you going to be paying their bills when they pass out from exhaustion? Because that's what's going to happen. You're going to send kids to the hospital from running back and forth, playing sports with a mask on inside the basketball court. Volleyball while playing basketball, or with masks on, maybe, okay? I don't know. But I'm not a doctor, but I'm not going to pretend. But honestly, just use common sense for a second here. Follow the science. Stop this nonsense with making these kids wipe everything down with all these chemicals and everything. Surface transmission does not occur with COVID. That has not been a thing since the first month of the pandemic, yet here we are debating, oh, we need to spend more money on chemicals that make these kids wipe stuff down. Stop! Just stop. When is this going to end? I keep asking you guys, when is the end? What is the goalpost? What is your definition of it's over? Are we going to live like this forever? I, I don't understand. Use the science. Stop this nonsense with the masks and the virtue signaling and all this stuff. Use actual data and real science to back up your decisions. I haven't seen one evidence-based scientific decision here yet. Not one. Everything's based on conjecture. How can you guys call yourselves a governing board if you don't even bother to look at science? And I'm not saying everybody here, but most. Now, lastly, I want to address one thing I think is very important. The storm that came through, there is at least one child I know that her home was completely destroyed in the event. I'm not going to give her name out, but I would encourage everybody here, and if you all really do care about children like you say you claim you do, I expect each and every one of yous to donate to that GoFundMe this up there, as well as anybody else in this district that has been forced into a homeless position like that. So, please look it up. She's in ninth grade. Again, I don't want to give her name out, but you can find out who it is, and you can donate to the GoFundMe. And I hope everybody listening on YouTube and on this board donates. I have, and I hope everybody else does, because if you really care and you want to put your money where your mouth is, do it. Show us you care, for once.
Jason Saylor, Skipback, Pennsylvania. I think this is probably my first work session, so I'm just going to give some feedback off of what I saw from the work session. There's, you know, I, I think as we want to try to get members from the community to come to these work sessions, and then follow up to go to the business meeting sections, there needs to be some, more information given to individuals and how things work. So, just giving you my overview of what I saw today, which led to some confusion, it sounded like for Section 5.09, not that I'm picking on it, but it sounded like the freezer lease contract was already signed prior to the consent given by the board. And then Dr. Halas asked a question of would that freezer have a redundancy operator put to it, or a generator, and that wasn't known. So, looking at it from an outside perspective, you would think that before a contract is signed, those questions would be approved by the board first. It might be that the board already approved it, and this is just a show, but it just looked like the contract was signed for the freezer prior to the freezer being signed. And if we leased the freezer for two years, that would overview the cost of the actual freezer to buy and have, if there ever was a secondary need for that freezer. As we talk about continuing to add Section 4.05 and 4.06, it looks like the admin and administrative staff and budget continues to grow, but what was a sobering report was the PSA scores were down, and the AP scores are down. And actually, that number of enrolled AP students is actually lower than it was two, three, and four years ago on the aggregate. The PSA scores are down as well, and there wasn't much discussion on that. We had a lot of discussions on the freezer and light bulbs, but we didn't have discussions on what we could do for scores to go down, which would be important as these budgets increase. Teachers' budgets increase, admin budgets increase, superintendents' budgets increase. You would then want to make sure that your, the scores are, are, are being appropriated with that. In terms of the enrollment numbers, previous enrollment numbers included charter students. That wasn't added in the enrollment number this year, and I'm not sure if that's because of the agreement that we have with the virtual, with the other areas in the county. I wasn't sure about that. And it would be good to see, where are we this year with enrollment compared to two years ago, or three years ago at this point, prior to COVID? That would be interesting to find out. And then, lastly, in terms of Section 3 for the PA Health and Safety Plan, there is, you know, for people looking for exemptions, there is confusion for what the PA Health Secretary has on Sections 3 for exemptions, what the school district has for exemptions. And there's a process where the judicial branch of Pennsylvania will overturn the PA sector health mandate that's happening right now, and then where would that lead to school districts, and how that would take effect. You know, with 10 seconds to go, I would hope to see there's a lot more conversations in these work sessions on some of these things. It sounds like a lot of it is just through and through. Lastly, just, I know I'm out of time, but the arbiter, although arbiter is a good site to have, and it's great to have, for the, for the individual, the referee, the umpire, the coach that uses the arbiter system, it costs a lot of money for us to be in that system. It wasn't something that was considered today, and that's perfectly fine. When you, when you're an official, you, you do those things. But arbiter's not good for the actual user. It's good for the management system. So, for us who are, who are PIA double A coaches and refs and, and umpires, that system's, you know, not good for us, because we lose money every game we, we coach or umpire.
Hi, Donna Rudolph, Lower Frederick. So, I'm wondering why this board is so out of touch with the community locally and statewide. So, as of last week, about 80% of all the PA school districts voted to make masks optional all across the state. And then, so there were about 400 out of 500 school districts in PA, and the school board voted for masks optional. People weren't challenging this. They weren't coming along and saying, oh, we can't do this. We can't have this. They were happy. It was working. Everything was good. But the governor wasn't happy. So, he went to the legislators and asked the legislators to draft some emergency legislation to make this mandatory, and they refused, because they said the parents had, and the school boards had the children's best interests and knew what was best. So, they put it back, and they left it the way it was, but the governor wasn't happy with that. So, we had the Health Secretary make these orders. Now, what we have is many of the school districts are not participating, or they're making forms for the exceptions. So, what I want to know is, why are we in the 20% of Pennsylvania? Why? Why are we in the 20%? And even in that 20% of the districts who voted to make masks mandatory, a lot of that was because the administration wasn't on the same page with the board. It wasn't because of the board. But our board doesn't listen to us. Or is it that our board feels as though they know better than parents? Is that it? Do you know better than parents? Why did 80% or more of Pennsylvania school boards think that parents knew best, and it should be, masks should be optional, but not here? So, anyway, we are left with, you know, the current situation. I know there's lawsuits going against that and everything else. We'll see what happens. But my question is, what is going to happen when we see that these other school districts are successful without kids wearing masks? Now, I know last year, they did. I know it's hard to believe, but there are all these private schools that stayed open all year. They didn't even close down, and they didn't wear masks. So, how can that be? If the question is safety, then how come they kept on going? They didn't even close. They didn't wear masks. And they're still going. There's many private schools. So, do we have to wait for a whole year to see that these guys fared well, so that we can, next year, you know, be brave enough to try to go with masks being optional? How long do we have to do this for? How long? Why can't parents decide? Do you guys know best, or do parents?
Seeing no other public comments at this time, we're going to move on to Section 10.02, and comments from board members. I'll accept comments from board members. I just want to state that any comment made by a board member is not representative of the board as a whole. Is there any board member that has a comment? Seeing none. 10.03, our Notice of Video Recording Disclaimer. Per Policy 006.3, all video recordings are subject to the following disclaimer. The opinions expressed by any members of the public do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of School Directors of the Perkyum and Valley School District, and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of School Directors of Perkyum and Valley School District hereby expressly disclaims any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public. Any unauthorized rebroadcasting of any video, audio, and/or still image of this meeting is strictly forbidden without the written permission of the Board of School Directors of the Perkyum and Valley School District. And prior to adjournment, I will announce that we had executive session prior to tonight's meeting for the purposes of personnel and collective bargaining. And with that, we'll adjourn tonight.